Welcome to our January 18th, 2022 city council meeting. Time is 7:00 PM. Meeting is now in session. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Samuel Martinez from Amazing Love Ministries, and Councilman Wu will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll rise, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, we remember the words this evening of King David of all, that you are our refuge, our ever-person help in time of danger. Father, we pray that you be a refuge, Father, to our first responders, that you be a refuge to our doctors and our nurses, Father, that are in the front line in this COVID battle. Father, we ask that you be a refuge to our police officers, that you be a refuge to our teachers, Father, and that our schools continue to be safe havens protected, Father, by you, in Jesus' name. Heavenly Father, we pray that you be a refuge to those in authority in our city, our mayor and their families, Father, our city council members and all their families, Father. We thank you, and we pray that if there be any, those that are in the hospital right now, Father, that you strengthen them. We speak health, wholeness in their bodies, and anyone in our city, Father, that has suffered the death of a loved one, we speak your comfort and your peace over them. And now direct us in this meeting. Give wisdom to all those that are in charge of the affairs of our city. We speak the blessing of God over our city. God bless America, and God bless West Covina, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Everyone, please put your right hand to your heart and face the flag and follow my lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Tabataba?
Present.
Councilwoman Wu?
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Present.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Here.
Mayor Castellanos?
Here.
And reporting out from closed session, City Attorney, is there anything to report out from closed session?
Nothing to report out, Mr. Mayor, but I wanted to announce a favorable ruling the city recently received in a litigation matter. In the matter of Sue Aguino v. Tony Wu and the city of West Covina, the plaintiff filed a complaint alleging a violation of civil rights, including rights of free speech, defamation, invasion of privacy, among other claims. We filed a motion for summary judgment in response to those claims. The court agreed with our arguments and granted the motion for summary judgment. The court stated that Councilmember Wu and the city did not violate plaintiff's free speech and did not discriminate against the plaintiff in any manner. And the court agreed and ordered, issued an order dismissing the case in its entirety. I just want to share some good news. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty. We have no presentations tonight, and we'll continue with oral communications. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out a yellow speaker card and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. Any emails which were received by 5:00 PM have been posted to the city's website. All emails are part of a public record. And just like last meeting, I would like to reduce oral communications to three minutes. I'm seeking consensus from my council. Is everyone okay with that?
I'm okay. I'm consent.
Thank you. Assistant City Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
We have eight speaker cards, Mayor.
Thank you.
Our first speaker is Herman, followed by Mike Greenspan, followed by Pedro Gonzalez.
So, we're back to the nonsense of 2022. So let me read into the record, Randenburg versus Ohio, since Mr. Wu won his case about first speech, but it's apparent that our three minutes from five minutes is a result of a tyrant mayor restricting your free speech to five minutes. It says only eight speakers. In the past, it used to be 15, 25 people speaking, but I guess they got tired of the mayor's shit here. So let me read into the record how a colored man speaks. As you see, I'm in the color. So, how far is the nigger going to? Yeah, this is what we're going to do to the niggers? A dirty nigger! Send the Jews back to Israel!
Does this have anything to do with our city business?
And California constitutional rights, Mr. Mayor. You don't do no good by harming me by restricting time because I still get the message across. Dirty nigger! So, we intend to do our part as American citizens, as we pledge allegiance, and again, give freedom for the whites. Nigger will have to fight.
Mike Greenspan, followed by Pedro Gonzalez, followed by Elsie Messman.
I hope you get the mental help you need. Next speaker, please.
Mike Greenspan, and I'm back. And yesterday was Martin Luther King Day, and wanted to go in something, but first want to let everybody know with the pastor, thank you for mentioning Jesus. If he had come back for Christmas, he would not have gotten any Christmas dinner at Tim Tebow's Tim Maquana Country Club. The guy who hollers Jesus the loudest is the one who would actually throw him from the dining room because he's Jewish. The club has no Jews. But because it's, yesterday was Martin Luther King Day, and next month is Black History Month, I do want to announce that that club does have one schwartz. It's a Yiddish word, a German word, a Portuguese word, means black, a person of color, one, which is, of course, more than how many they have at Forest Lake Country Club in South Carolina. They have none there. I remember a naive Californian years ago asked, "You mean to say that the President of the United States could not play a round of golf at a country club?" I said, "Yes, that's true. He's the wrong color." But if we push the envelope, and I've been on a mission for years to teach the fucking Baptists in the Klan what a schwartz is. So at Klan or Tim Tebow's Country Club, the white-collar Klan, of course, at Tim Maquana, they could actually have a second schwartz. No yiddies, sorry, Jesus, Mr. Christ, we only have Christian members at Tim Maquana Country Club. So when it comes time to celebrate Christmas, you may not have Christmas dinner with us because you're Jewish. And there's another thing. A California professional golfer, what's his name? Phil Mickelson, yeah, he plays golf over there, too, because, you see, he's just another one of those Prejudice Golfers Association type. He don't want to play his golf with yiddies and schwartzes. That's why he plays with Tim Tebow over there at Tim Maquana Country Club, and jokes him though. Yes, an NFL town under Ku Klux Klan government, and down the road from where the Jaguars play, be it if they host the Rams or the Chargers or whoever, is a Confederate Park on the way to the stadium. Yes, they still have a Confederate Park in an NFL town. Boy, there are a lot of dumb schwartzes in the NFL and through the communities that just don't know what's going on. Now, I want to also talk about the police. We've had, you guys had that silly motion of no confidence in the DA, and one guy was a retired police officer from city of L.A. And there's also your George, George Olson, the one that, he's a part-time pig with city of L.A. And let's talk about Mitchell Englander, for the record. He got-
Mr. Pedro Gonzalez.
Thank you. Time.
Pedro Gonzalez, followed by Elsie Messman, followed by Bill Elliott.
Good evenings.
Evening.
My name is Pedro Gonzalez, and I'm here, I was on another matter, but I just needed to address, although I don't agree with the content of what was just said, unfortunately, fortunately, it's their right. I had to sit through this crap, too, so. That being said, I disagree with cutting down speaking time, just because. I am here to address, first of all, I'd like to preface my speech. I'm here to air dirty laundry, and that's because I can't get answers from the people I'd be within the city. I've been getting, I've been getting attacked for more than a year now from the cabal at City Hall Code Enforcement Division for having a dead lawn. My street, 18 other properties have dead grass. Do they get tickets? No. Does a neighbor across the street who's 20 feet across, does he get a ticket? No. Three doors down, he hasn't had a yard for forever either. I don't have a yard, I don't have grass, because I killed it, because I was going to put in artificial turf. We are in the worst drought in the western United States since 1934, the worst drought in 2015, maybe. The New Brown was the new green, it was declared by Governor Brown. Yet, we have people giving me tickets because my dead yard, my dead grass, is causing vermin and rodent infestations. Really? That's what the violations state. I got another one here. At the bottom of every single citation, it says, "You have a right to appeal this administrative citation at a hearing before an administrative hearing." Part of the due process, right? So I pay my $100. You cash the check. I have not received a hearing date, and yet I'm up to number three, and this one's for Why? Well, I'm being cited for paving my front yard with artificial turf, okay? And they're forcing me to remove it because more than 50% is artificial turf.
Well, we could do, you could leave your information with our city manager.
They have it.
Okay, well, I'll make sure we reach out and resolve this.
Okay. Mr. Wu's neighbor has, from the curb to the top of his house-
Sir, I'm going to maintain an order here. Time's up. We will resolve this. You've got my word.
Thank you. Okay? And it's not just that, it goes deeper.
You could email me, I'll have a conversation with you. You're welcome.
Elsie Messman, followed by Bill Elliott, followed by Travis Tibbetts.
Good evening, council staff, everyone here tonight and at home. My name is Elsie Messman. First, I would like to thank-
We still have a meeting going on. Messman, continue. Sorry, there was noise behind you.
Pardon?
Please continue.
First, I would like to thank, are you going to give me my three minutes?
We could reset.
Reset, please.
Three seconds.
There we go.
For allowing five people to speak for three minutes, not five minutes at the last meeting, while some other council members speak twice as long and say nothing, just to be heard. My second complaint is, this council did not allow any money from the American Rescue Plan for companies that suffered losses during the pandemic. Having to make changes, a lot of it has come out of the owner's pockets in order to stay open. This council, to my knowledge, did not inform the companies how they could get a reimbursement. At least the city could do is put a deposit of $500,000 to $1 million for loans to help these people. Instead, you are looking after only the fire and the police department. The council just spent $3.5 million for two fire trucks and spent $25,000 on repairing five old trucks, which should have been on a regular schedule for maintenance. Now, this council wants $115,000 to paint fire stations two and four. A contract negotiated by the manager is now asking for $405,000 for the police department to be paid from the American Rescue Plan. Number three, the city council needs to clean up their act. Graffiti removals should be painted the same color and complete the wall for once and for all. Red zones need to be repainted. Parking lot at the city hall here, the white lines need to be redone. Buses, benches where the bus stops, citizens should not have to sit or stand on the sidewalk without any shade or protection. These are just a few of the council's things that they could do to improve the city. We have lawsuits going on with Amazon, with the health plan costs, sportsplex expenses, lawsuits pending, bonds galore. What are you people doing? Do you know what you're doing? Or are you just shooting from the hip? I think the latter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Elliott, followed by Travis Tibbetts, followed by Lynn Nagel.
Hello, City Council, Bill Elliott. First thing I want to say is, I really agree with the reduction of time for public comments. If you can't get it out, what you want to say, I mean, look at all the abuse that we have to put up with, you know, which I just want to remind people that the city of Laverne, two minutes. The city of Los Angeles, one minute. So be happy with what you have. If you can't get out your thought in three minutes, then probably should write an email. Second thing I want to say is, I want to apologize to this city clerk. The last city council meeting that I was in, only she and I and Herman Monster were the only three people, and the police weren't up at the top yet or anything, it was empty chamber, and unprovoked, he completely verbally attacked her. He called her every name in the book, used the F-word, I think he used the bad C-word. He said everything. And, you know, he's got a right to his free speech up here at this podium like the rest of us, but that was a personal attack, and I really regret not intervening in that. She deserved that. And he is a scourge on this public comment podium, him and Greenspan both. Remember when John Schumaker was the only nut? Well, we got a house full now. You know, so I really am begging the city attorney to really scour the statutes and find something that this man has crossed the line on. I believe in free speech as much as the next person, but this is really giving West Covina a bad name, and I think something can be done. And what was the third thing? Oh, you remember that cockroach that came in here, Kevin DeLeon? Remember that night? There's 300 people in here, and it was pandemonium, and, well, I read the newspaper today. I think he's turning into a Republican because he doesn't like homeless people. He really wants to get the homeless out of Los Angeles. I guess his plan is to send them to West Covina. We're all full up. I hope they can do something else, but I'm encouraged by Kevin DeLeon's conservative leanings now, shall we say? And I think it's encouraging, and there's still hope for Brian Tabataba. Thank you.
Thank you.
Travis Tibbetts, followed by Lynn Nagel, followed by Angie Gillingham.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I know you know who I am, but for the audience and residents watching, my name is Travis Tibbetts. I am a lieutenant with the Police Department, and I represent the Police Management Association. I'm going to do something a little different. I'm going to say something positive, because it seems like every time I'm here, there's a lot of negative going towards you. And I think it's important for the residents to know that over the past couple of years, with your support and leadership, we really have gotten to a place where we have good relationship with city staff, and when it comes to employee relations, I think we're in a really good place from your guys' support in the Police Department. We're hiring, morale's up, and it's just appreciated. And I just think a genuine thank you needs to go to each one of you, and I think we're moving forward. We're providing good service to the city, and we're improving, and I just genuinely want to thank you, I want to thank city staff as well, and let's just keep moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lynn Nagel, followed by Angie Gillingham, followed by Patrick Bachi.
I guess I can take my mask off. Ah, these things, they're hot. I'm Lynn Nagel, and I reside at 2915 D Lane in West Covina. Thank you all for giving me a minute of your time. I have an issue with the Maintenance Department, and I've been trying to deal with this since November 4th. It's still going on. I went on your agenda, and I found, took a few things out of the agenda that was dated for the 4th of January. It says, "Making community more burdens by implementing the master plan of street trees, paying particular attention to areas near schools and bus stops." And then the second one was under Article 5, achieve physical sustainability, financial stability, implementing appropriate funding for landscaping maintenance districts. The next one would be on the 7th, expanding economic development. It says, "Work with property owners to promote development in the community." I went and was looking at my property taxes that are due on the 1st of February, and in there, I'm paying to maintain the green belt, and this is why I'm here. There's a three-block green belt, and my total is $386 a year. Now, that doesn't sound like a lot, but you take and add that up with everybody. This all started on November 4th. I don't know if they received-
There weren't enough for all of them.
Oh, good, okay.
But I will make sure that they received a copy.
I may not have gotten it in the right order, but I hope I did. I apologize. At any rate, November 4th, I walked out onto my balcony, and I looked, and here's this huge branch right below, in the green belt. There was no wind, no nothing, this humongous branch just fell. Well, I thought I better call the city, because it's on their property. So on the very back of this mess here, I'm sorry, there was a lady who listened to me. She got the information wrong. Now, I may have very, in my discussion with her, I probably gave her maybe too much or something, but she's got it located, Woodgate Erica tree branches on sidewalk and hill, fell on some wires. It's sitting on the side of a hill, it's not even in the street, it hasn't fallen on any, so that was wrong. Then, am I done already?
Yeah, that's time. We'll reach out to you to address this.
Okay. What?
We will reach out to you to address this.
Okay, please do, because the branch is still there, but I got four of these things that says we've taken care of it. That's my problem.
Okay.
Do you have a location? Do you have a location?
Yeah, it's in here.
Yeah, 2915.
Angie Gillingham, followed by Patrick Bachi, followed by Bill Robinson.
Good evening. I come here tonight after hearing the mayor and the rest of the council's wish list of priorities on January 4th, 2022, and to my surprise, not one of you has listed the importance of replacement of the planning director, Jeff Anderson, who left that position in February 2020. The mayor stated in an interview recently that he got his start in our city, being appointed as a planning commissioner, where he sat for four years. As I attended many of those planning meetings, I watched Anderson provide direction, deliver solutions internal to the development operations, and in reference to facilitating residential and commercial projects consistent with the community's goals, a position that is extremely necessary with the push of SB 9, SB 10 by the state, and the city's goals to meet the RENA numbers. Why wouldn't the mayor make that a priority of his? He listed his priorities in the San Gabriel Tribune as better local transportation, visual aspects of our streets and medians, trash and graffiti. I believe we have, or we employ groups to take care of that work. And lastly, on the agenda, item 10, where you'll be discussing the 3% increase to our PD. In 2019, councilpeople, councilperson Lopez Wu and the mayor justified giving a 12% raise when we didn't have the money to do so. So I'm sure you'll proceed in giving the 3% now that we have the Americans' Care Act.
Patrick Bachi, followed by R. Robinson, followed by Ray Vargas.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm clairvoyant, and I can feel the sentiments of people and ideas without being in their presence. And through this, I got a response that you, Miss Councilmember Letive Lopez-Viado, is witness to something that's against me. I sent you an email back in September about this issue, and you responded. I'll read your response. This is the first, I have heard of this, but you are welcome to move forward with what you need to do, as I have no affiliation with any of the people you mentioned in this email. Mrs. Bressiani is no longer with the city of West Covina, and we currently do not partner with GWC in any events. Well, in this email is Gary Clifford. You do have an association with Athens Services, so saying that is, I don't think it's true. And this is, this was sent to the council on, the date was April 7th of last year, okay? This was orated to the council. I'll leave this, you can all look it over, about my issue. I don't need to go, we don't have enough time for me to go into depth. But there was information provided, and nobody responded. April 7th was the get-go of COVID, so you were closed here, and it was orated, probably by Ms. Sherrick. The audio was distorted, and this is a little longer than five minutes, so it was terminated at five minutes. Anyways- Anyways, there is a problem. The foundation of it is fraud. I was deceived by some associates. But the bigger problem is, I know I'm being slandered. I'm being smeared socially. For the last four years, I feel like I have faced a wall of bigotry here, and I want to get this resolved, even if the city has to concede to, yeah, you know, we did do this to you. So I'll leave this, and somebody contact me. You, Mr. Carmani, or Brian, who I feel has the moral compass in this organization. He would be a good aide. I addressed this to you in your campaign, by the way.
Time's up, sir. You do the same.
I'll take this. Thank you. R. Robinson, followed by Ray Vargas.
The blurb on this book says, "If you want to understand the role of Fauci, Gates, Pharma, CDC, WHO, intelligence agency, and others played in planning, launching, and profiting from the COVID pandemic, drop what you're doing and read this powerful and meticulously researched book. Your future, your family's future, and the future of our democracy are at stake." That's a quote by an author of a book called Jawbreaker. Black Americans are familiar with the Tuskegee Experiment. Kennedy mentions Tuskegee briefly, but the book extends the Guinea pig's horror story worldwide to hundreds of clinical trials in Africa, Central America, India, where the pharma monopoly operates, dangerous clinical trials sacrificing public health for profitable mandatory vaccinations. Nobody knows, even doctors, what's in the jab. We must find out why graphene hydroxide and graphene oxide are part of the vaccine injections into our human bodies. Forcing the entire American population to accept an arbitrary and risky clinical trial is the most intrusive and demeaning unconstitutional action ever imposed by any government. Advanced directive patient rights and the Hippocratic Oath used to exist in America. The CDC Director, Fauci, and the WHO have admitted that the RNA vaccinations cannot stop transmission and don't induce immunity. Truth stated above is contradicted by Biden when he announced that all healthcare workers shall be vaccinated, because if you seek care at a healthcare facility, you should have the certainty that the people providing the care protected from, are protected from COVID and cannot spread it to you. The vaccines will never accomplish this COVID protection Biden promises. The fight for medical freedom continues every day. You must defeat medical tyranny. Government is, puts a bounty on your life. For each COVID patient, hospitals receive about $100,000 incentive payments from Medicare, a 20% bonus payout to the hospital. The CARES Act provides incentives for hospitals to use treatments dictated solely by the federal government under the auspices of NIH. These bounties must be paid back, if not earned, by making the COVID-19 diagnosis and following the COVID-19 protocol. Due to Biden's CARES Act incentives program, you could limp into a hospital with a sprained ankle, unvaccinated, staff member...
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Mr. Robinson, time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ray Vargas.
I'm at 629 North Vincent Avenue, West Covina. It's an ongoing problem. Still got things going on, and I sent an email back August. Everybody here, nobody responded but Brian. So I say, hey, they just don't give a shit, you know? I know you guys are all puppets here of Tony, but I'm here to speak my piece. I'm tired, tired of the code enforcement. I got a 10-by-10 canopy I set up. I was washing my cars. One weekend, they passed by, they took pictures. I get it in the mail. I showed Tabata, you know? I got trash cans. I'm picking up the leaves in the front. My kids are raking. I got Edison next to me. I still got homeless people there. I still got a problem there. They're putting, they're pushing their buggies in there, they're shitting in there, they're pissing in there, they're trying to sleep in there. I'm chasing them out. I patrol the north part of West Covina. We don't have a police department. We don't have officers that could come out and whatnot because they don't have enough on staff. They've been cut. They don't have enough officers. So we got to patrol. We got to be out there, you know? I would like to see you out there, any of you guys out there. I see Brian out there. He's reaching out. He's looking at the community. He's asking what the issues are, what the problems are. I got a damn island. It looks like shit. I open up my front door, and it looks like Arizona. It looks like a desert. It looks like shit. All I got is rubbish, all the car accidents, all the bumpers, the hubcaps, the reflectors, blinkers, and everything is thrown right there. Maintenance don't pick it up. The towing company don't pick it up. It just sits there. But yet they want to take pictures because I got a canopy there? Take pictures of the shit that's on the island. You guys do something like that. You know, I'm sorry, Bill. Hey, we need more than five minutes because there's a lot of shit. There's a lot of corruption in this city, and it starts here.
You know, can you watch your mouth?
Starts with you guys.
The cussing's not necessary, and I really don't...
You know what? I'm speaking my piece. I got three minutes. I'm speaking my piece, you know? Because you guys don't get it. You ask, oh, email. Was him. I've only seen him out there, nobody else, because nobody gives a shit.
If you could check that email and resend it to me, I really don't think I got it. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
We have no, excuse me, we have no additional speaker cards, Mayor.
City managers, or before we do that, city manager, would you please respond to public comment concerns?
I was taking careful notes as all these speakers presented tonight, and I will respond to each of them directly tomorrow. Mr. Pedro Gonzalez regarding his code enforcement matter. I do know, in code enforcement, we always seek voluntary compliance. I know that the enhancement of an attractive community and positive image is a goal in which we all have a stake. And I know our code enforcement manager is very diligent in terms of trying to obtain compliance with city codes. Mr. Gonzalez asked for a hearing date, and I'll see to it that we get him one. I'll see to it that we respond to Elsie Messman regarding her concerns about graffiti red zones, white lines, and bus benches, especially to Lynn Nagel about that fallen branch in the green belt area. We'll get back to Mr. Owen. He asked that we address his issues, said he's faced a wall of bigotry. I assure you, as an organization, we affirm the dignity and the worth of all who we serve and who come to these chambers. And I'll also see to it we get back to Mr. Vargas about the code enforcement matter and the issues of the poor maintenance of the median. I think that's all I have. I've got some considerable follow-ups to do tomorrow, and I'll jump on those.
Yeah, and about that wall of bigotry comment, my recollection is that's a civil-private matter outside of our organization. But thank you.
I haven't spoken with him, and if I need to, I will.
Okay. Councilman Wu.
Yeah, I want to follow up regarding the D lane. Okay, I saw the pictures. Okay, I can see the tree bench, okay? Branch is really on the green belt. Why our public work didn't pick it up? Okay, and if they send email, I didn't receive this email, but if city receives this email and they report to the goal request, okay, and/or they send an email to our public work, why? Haven't picked it up yet, right? So it's still there. So, okay, it looked like it's since last year, December 13. So why is the issue? Why? Okay, normally, I think my Chris pick up right away, because I have quite a few. There's the resident email to me. I send a CC to you guys, and they're right away, my Chris pick it up, okay? So why this one? Okay, we didn't pick it up.
Through the chair. I can't answer it, they sit here, but I'll see to it, we resolve it, and I'll work on this one tomorrow.
Would you please send the public work to make sure, okay? And in the future, we need to talk about systematically all the hillside to see, and we already have another public work superintendent or assistant public work director. So maybe they can show us about all the system that some overgrown tree need to really be to be addressed, okay? Potentially issue, because if they fail, okay, maybe you will hit not only the property, but also people walking down below. So I think we need to really survey all this green belt, the tree, and to make sure it's safe.
Yeah, I think that's forthcoming this year with some town halls, correct, Mr. Manager?
Correct. Mr. Mayor, we did this year, as part of the budget process, say that we would holistically and comprehensively evaluate these landscape maintenance districts, and we'd take a careful look at what funding is derived from the people who pay into those and what services they receive. We want to get those two things in alignment. I think there's general agreement that we're not providing enough service there, and so we're going to look at those in terms of assessment district funding strategies. In the meantime, we'll certainly take care of this fallen branch. I'll get on that one.
And regarding another resident talking about Benson, the island, okay, hub and the debris, okay, I do, I think we're going to redo Benson regarding the conservation with all the, okay, the plantation that we're going to plant and beautify all the island. Okay, am I right? I think Benson would be, I think they are doing the Azusa right now. I think next one, I forgot which one, maybe Benson.
I believe it's Glendora.
Glendora and then Benson, right?
And then move on to the next ones.
Yeah, so...
The order, but yeah.
Yeah, so...
Brand, Vincent.
And, but the debris, trash, okay? And we have to see whose responsibilities are, okay, and the contractors, Mary Posa, or who responsible for those debris? So no matter how he criticized, but we still need to address, okay, some issue regarding the city median.
Understand. Yes, sir.
And to that point, that email, I don't think I've received it, so if anyone else received it, I hope he forwards it to me. And if any of you have it, Brian, sounds like you have it, if you could forward it as well, make sure to address it.
Through the chair. I did write down the addresses, 629 North Vincent, and noted the poor maintenance of the median, the car parts, et cetera, and can certainly address those things immediately and will.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, let's see. And now city manager's report.
Through the...
Was there a comment?
There was a comment.
I just wondered, the big question, make sure the tree is in the city.
Mr. City Manager, that question.
Regarding the tree that was noted that's fallen, I'm assuming that's why it fell. But typically, we just dispatch it with a chainsaw and dispose it. I certainly will check on that, yeah.
Cool. Thank you. There you have it. Now for our city manager's report, given by our city manager, Dave Carmini.
Good evening again, Mayor and councilmembers of the public. I do have a couple of brief items to share with you this evening. Wanted to highlight, next slide, if I could. We have underway a number of major capital projects at the moment. We have some $3 million worth of energy projects and $3 million worth of solar projects. And those that attend our West Covina Senior Center will notice that the solar power panels are now being stood up. We're standing steel in the parking lot. The long-term impacts of this is we're going to generate some savings that we can use to pay for these facilities in the short term and save operational costs in the long term. So it's really heartening to see this finally being implemented. I wanted to mention, we have a spring festival coming. We wanted to bring back community events as best we could, even during these times. This is an outdoor event, which will be held at the Sportsplex. There are a number of prominent community groups that are going to be partnering with this one, March 12th from 12 noon to 10 p.m., and March 13th from 12 p.m. to 7 p.m. Groups that are interested in participating are encouraged to contact our assistant city manager, Roxanne Lerma. We've got her email available, and we want people to save that date, whether they're participating or that they're participants. We think that'll be a very nice spring event. This next slide, COVID testing services. We seem to have a lot of demand for this right now, and so we have stood up COVID testing sites at three locations now operating in the city at the senior center, Tuesday through Sunday. Shadow Oak Park, we're going to be running that one Monday through Friday. We just initially ran it seven days a week, and effective this week, we're also running at City Hall between those three sites. We're getting hundreds of participants. People that are in need of a test are invited to come. They're not required to pre-register, but it speeds things up if they do. And for more information, this information is on our website, and you can click on that QR code, and we can get you pre-registered and get you tested. The responses are pretty quick. We're getting them within 24 to 48 hours, and all are welcome. We hope people come. Safety is our number one concern, and we want to make sure that people who are in need of those tests can get them. I know from personal comments I've received from community members and neighbors, these tests were really precious, and we couldn't find them. We couldn't find them for our employees. We couldn't find them at all commercially. So it's, I think, a representative of the city's efforts to reach out, and these services are available. And City Hall, we're encouraging people that want to get tested here to enter up by the library and circle down through the parking lot. But it's working, it's working well. I don't know how long we're going to do it and for what hours, at which locations, but for now, we're serving literally hundreds of people, and we encourage people to come if they have a need. This next slide is some statistics about building and safety permits, just year-on-year, 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021. Whoa. You can see that these numbers are climbing. In 2018, we had 3,172. 2019, 3,311. You're seeing a big jump to 2020, 4,017, and continued climbing into 2021, 5,066. One of the reasons we're seeing this is code enforcement gently steers people to get building permits when they don't have them, if we get complaints, et cetera. We're finding that we're getting really good service from our provider here. This is an area where people are typically not reticent to complain, and I get almost no complaints about quality of service. I think we're providing very good service, and I just wanted to share those numbers year-on-year. And the last slide, I wanted to update the council. You adopted goals for this current calendar year, and I just wanted to mention some progress toward those goals in each one of these categories. Our number one goal is protect public safety. I just mentioned in the slide before last of how we're protecting public safety by responding to the global pandemic with our additional COVID testing sites. Getting those up and running was a labor of love, but commend our public services, public work staff for all of their work together with the police and all the departments working together to make that happen. The goal of bringing all facilities to standard, we're seeing good work occurring with the contract with the Conservation Corps, the beautification of Azusa Avenue. We also led a contract with an electrical contractor so we could get that electrical work repaired out there. And we're going to also point them toward Glendora Avenue so we could get that area lit up and make it sparkle and shine. The next goal, implement the city's active transportation plan. There's an item on your agenda tonight. I just wanted to highlight it. Last October, at the second meeting in October, you approved some 27 different locations, distinct locations for all manner of things that have been recommended by the traffic engineer who's here tonight. I'd like for her to say hello. Jana, if you'd raise your hand. Thank her for her good work for the city. And assuming this item gets approved tonight, this is an award of bid to install at all of those locations. There's some other ones in the pipeline, and those will have to come to council for your consideration, hopefully approval, but this is a big step forward on any number of different things, brighter crosswalks and flashing stop signs, et cetera, et cetera. The next goal, maintain good governmental relations. The next goal, maintain good governmental relations. We are working to achieve regulatory compliance in a number of areas. We mentioned here, the state elections law regarding redistricting. You've got a scheduled public hearing tonight that's by time supposed to march off at 8:30. If we're conducting other business, you can postpone it till that business concludes. We're also working on some legislative letters for the mayor's consideration. We've drafted. You asked us to address these issues of the smashing grabs and the general problem of our criminal justice system and lawlessness, people taking actions with seemingly no consequence. And so, Mayor, that letter's ready for your review when you get to that one this evening, I hope. Under the goal of achieving fiscal sustainability and financial stability, also tonight on your agenda, we're adopting MOUs with all labor associations. Those are agenda items 10 and 11. And then lastly, a creative and active community. I mentioned the spring festival earlier in this report tonight. I think one of the main points about it is we're not the city entirely hosting it. We're co-hosting it, and all of those groups are coming together to make this event a real grassroots effort. And that's all I've got for this evening. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I have one more question from earlier. Regarding our planning department, are we fully staffed there now?
We've just made offers. We had two vacancies in the planning series. We've made offers, and those people are starting. We also have an employee, a critical employee there out with COVID. We might have to bring in some interns, maybe a paid intern, I'm not sure. But we've got an immediate need for somebody to work the counter, just the day in and day out work. I think Angie Gillingham mentioned tonight the need for a planning director. I acknowledge that need. We didn't recommend it be budgeted this year because we're trying to keep things, revenues equal to expenditures overall. Our assistant city manager, Pauline Morales, is running that department from, from the city manager's office. And I think we're keeping up with our caseload. Next week's meeting is canceled for lack of business. So I don't think we're impeding progress. But certainly, long term, I'd like to see that position restored.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Councilman Wu.
But we currently, we have Joanne Bond. She's our planning manager, right?
Yes, Joanne Burns is our planning manager and in the lead in the department.
And I think we have about three or four assistant planner, right? Why not two?
Yes, sir.
So we're going to hire additional two?
No, we have two vacancies. We'll hire two and then have a professional planning staff of three.
Three.
Right.
Do we have enough of staff to, based on the 5,000, okay, on the 2021 and the 2022 possible, with all this potential business coming in, do we have enough of manpower to? Because they basically is our, okay, cashier for people to bring the money into the city and asking for development. And we need a planning department with hopefully full staff to not delay the people want to bring the money to the city.
Through the chair, I accede the point. I certainly don't want to be understaffed there. And I think that department, every single member of it is blessed with work. Nobody's got their feet up on their desk. It's, it's busy. And I'm willing to look at whether an additional planning position is justified. If it is, I'll, I'll bring it to you.
Yeah, but I want to justify. I haven't received any email from anybody complaining about our service yet. So.
Exactly. I'd like to echo that. Everything I've ever heard is positive. I don't have any complaints regarding our planning department. It's actually been all positive.
Pretty positive, including our beauty and safety is pretty positive?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. And I think TransTax, okay, I think their staff is pretty with courtesy and make thing much faster than before. I think currently I really haven't received. But a couple of years ago, I've been receiving a lot of complaint from the planning, from the delay and this and that. But so possible, okay, if I'm broke, why you want to fix it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now, moving on to the consent calendar. Council, is there anything you'd like to pull from the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull number seven.
Number seven. Any, any other items to pull, or is it just seven? Mayor Protem Diaz?
Three and five.
Five, seven.
Which one?
Three, five, and seven.
Okay.
All right. That being it, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, items one through eight, with the exception of three, five, and seven?
I'll move the motion.
I'll second it.
All right. We got a first and a second. Assistant City Clerk?
I have a motion by Councilwoman Lopez Viado and a second by Mayor Protem Diaz. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Castellanos?
Aye.
Those items pass, and that brings us to item number three.
Thank you, Mayor Castellanos. City Manager, I have a question regarding this item. I noticed that in your, your report there, you talked about Shadow Oak and City Hall. And so, and I know that we have one, don't we, at Cortez Park? And it wasn't mentioned. So what is this? What does this mean?
Through the chair, if I didn't mention the third site, it's my oversight because we are running a site in cooperation with the county at the senior center. The Fulgent site is by appointment only. Even that one has been quite busy.
Okay.
I know I hear from our firefighters that are working station two, that they've had whole families come knock on the door to say, I can't get in. I can't get an appointment. What do I do? And they're pointing them towards Shadow Oak, which has been up and running and really very efficient.
I see.
We've had, I mean, to your, to your question, we've had some inquiry from other providers, including the county, as to whether there's a need for yet an additional one. And I want to keep our options open.
Okay.
The idea about an additional one would stand up again at Cameron, that might make sense in the immediate term. Who knows how much this thing will spike like a ice pick and then fall off again. Turn it up and turn it down. We've run during this crisis, during this pandemic, a center at Cameron Park, and then it quickly lost steam.
I see.
The workers were so bored, they were out at the corner trying to wave people in like with spinning signs.
Right.
And so we just shut it down. But it might make sense in the immediate term to do it. And, and the county had been in conversation with us. They were really impressed by the job the city had done to stand up these other two sites at Shadow Oak and here at City Hall. And they didn't want to get us oversaturated. But my attitude is, it really doesn't hurt anything to stand it up. And so I think it might make sense to do so.
Okay, so that, so is it this part of that agenda, part of this agenda, that Cameron location? Because I see Cortez here, but I don't see anywhere where it talks about Cameron.
Well, we could avail ourselves of that additional site under this agreement. I don't think the county really cares. They just want to have some written permission for space use and use of our facilities. And we are in conversation with them about it. We're trying to meet the need everywhere we can.
Right. So do we need a third location?
Well, this would, at the moment, be the fourth. Might, might not hurt, would be my answer to that. Might not hurt to do it right now. I don't know if this is the peak of it all, but we're serving literally hundreds of people driving through. And, and they're grateful to be able to get a test, and they're getting the test results in pretty reasonable times. This is covered under the disaster declaration. So it's not like we're having to come out of pocket or out of the general fund to subsidize this operation. That's what these funds are for, and we're using them for the correct purpose. So I think it might make sense to do it. And we'll be talking further with the county about that, that piece.
Okay.
Might, might also be good to have some fluid ability to dial one back and have another one stand up if it gets to be too much or too much of an impact on business to have it here, for example. We tried to preserve access, public access to, to this meeting and regular city business by basically splitting that lower parking lot. But.
So maybe it would make sense to.
It might. It might. We're making a lot of decisions in the field, kind of day by day, but might make sense to do so. Willing to look at that. Yes.
Councilman Tabatabai?
Thank you, Mayor, for giving me the floor. Yes, I just wanted to reiterate, I think it would be an opportune time, especially when, when you look at Cortez, Shadow Oak, and City Hall, it seems like we have much of the city covered. But that central area, Cameron Park, especially the location to the high school, and the high schools and the schools have been hit hard. And I think that that would allow everyone in the community to have access to testing that is close and that is, again, accessible. So if that is a possibility, I think it would be for the next, you know, month, I believe they said, we should be looking at this till the end of February. So maybe a good idea. Thank you.
I mean, through the chair, I think there's general agreement about this. So I've got a consensus of the council. I do know that the school officials are pointing their parents toward our sites because they had stood up a site of their own, which was quickly overcapacity. And ours were readily available. And so I've heard from school administrators, their gratitude and appreciation that we're running these sites. There's a lot of demand and a whole different set of rules that apply to teachers and students when they come in contact. And Councilman Tabatabai is well familiar with all of that. But wouldn't hurt to do it right now, is my sense. Wouldn't hurt.
Councilman Wu?
And I have a different take. Okay, I think, okay, we already have two site. Okay, we basically, okay, and, okay, by no appointment only, okay. And, okay, so basically drive through, no, no appointment, okay. And, and I standing over there outside yesterday and today, I calculate how many car coming in, okay. And the car didn't wait in a long line. The car just randomly in and out. So hopefully, and same thing to the Shadow Oak. So it's really, we have that kind of demand, then we're going to utilize all our park. Okay. And the Cortez Park, I went to see from time to time, and I don't see line over there either. Okay. And so are we going to, okay, put all our park with parking with a lot of test center? Last year, the test center coming in at, okay, and Cameron, and then the demand is not there. And, and a lot of resident complaining about why we need them over there. So I understand currently, maybe they have a surge going on. So people really want to do a testing. So I really want to really see what county can they do, no appointment, okay, and can drive through. Okay, so in that way, more convenient for people with QR code, okay, like what this company doing. I think this company is very efficient. You come in QR code, okay, and go through it, you can fill it up. Okay, no, I ask people, they say no personal information, basically just medical information. How, do you have a shot? How many shot you have? Okay, what kind of shot you have? Do you have syndrome? This and all, more about medical. And then they will give you a swab, and then 20, 48 hours. And I remember somebody I referred to Shadow Oak, and they went to Wednesday, and they got the result on Friday. Okay, and weekend, I think it'd be difficult, okay, because somebody goes Saturday, they haven't received, okay, by this morning. Okay, I said, please let me know if you get the result, so we can calculate the time and the performance. But, but my point is, okay, okay, we, I think we need to see their contract and how long they, they want to occupy our park. Okay, so in that way, okay, we don't need to have, okay, saturate all the places. And I know Edgewood have a test center too. So, so, so the high school, they have a test center. We provide this mega test center. This has a four station. So, so, and then we have a two station and the Shadow Oak. Okay, and I think we should know first, what kind of, okay, and the process they want to provide at the Cortez and additional Cameron. Okay, and is that appointment only? And then, okay, and how long it take for, to, to get the result? And second thing is, how long they want to book that place? So we need to know the contract. And so city manager, you have to see how this, and we should maybe let this two side, run see everybody to do it because one south side, one City Hall in the middle of the city, everybody can drive 5, 10 minutes to come over here to go through it. Okay, at least get a test one week to see how it goes. Because you don't want to set it up, and then there will be no demand. And we, it's such a waste of a resource. Yeah, go ahead.
Through the chair, I certainly understand. We'll take those thoughts into the, the process and the decision. I would also like to take this opportunity to encourage people to share the information about the availability of these testings. I was surprised last week. I went to my service club, and I passed out the flyers, because I'm always telling people. And the consensus in the room was, oh, I didn't know the city was doing this. And here, we thought we'd done it on social media and on the city webpage, and I thought the world knew. Well, maybe not. And so I've been calling people I know, community members, as in when I'm in the car going from here to there. Jake, could you help spread the word? I think we could all do more.
I just want to add on what you just say, promotion, let people know we provide this service. I, I spend $100 on the Facebook boost. I boost about the site. I spend my own money, okay, two times. One is for the Shadow Oak, and this time is for the city. So city, okay, parking lot. So I hopefully people can know we provide this service. And people asking about is West Covina resident only? I say, no, everybody welcome, welcome. Please, if you need to come over here to be safe, and so, okay, to get the test, so you know, did you get it or not? If you don't, then you can come out, okay, to, okay, and if you maybe have issue, then stay home. So, so anyway, okay, promotion, okay, and the people know we provide a service. Okay, otherwise, you have over here and nobody know. And same thing, Cameron, and same thing, okay, Cortez Park, okay, and Shadow Oak, and we, and, and the high school. So we have way too many saturation. So that is the thing I worry about. So I think we should see this two side, okay, and how they work. And maybe we can request Cortez Park changing to, okay, even drive through, no appointment, okay, is acceptable. Because I know somebody get turned, turned away, like if they don't have appointment. So, so that is some issue, okay, my concern. Okay, we don't want entire U.C.T. saturated with this kind of flyby just for temporarily people, everybody panicking, want to do the test.
That's why I was asking if it was going to be a replacement instead of an addition to. And so, and the places that I've seen, it seems like Shadow Oak has been the busiest. And when I've driven through Cortez or through the senior center, it's empty. And so with City Hall, maybe one, two cars. So, you know, I just don't think we need a third one.
I want to add on about Shadow Oak. I went there, okay, I see quite a lot of car. I think the south side doesn't have enough in the Royal High, Hacienda High, the county area. Everybody using our Shadow Oak.
I, I agree.
Yeah. And, and so in that way, it's needed in Shadow Oak due to the surrounding neighborhood. I don't think Warner, Diamond Bar, they have a test center. So everybody come to Shadow Oak. I think it's a good service for the south side. No matter who they are, the resident, they can utilize this service. So anyway, but, but the city, this today, I don't see, okay, a long line. Okay, so, so hopefully, we can promote, I promoted already, see if people can utilize the service. It's this makeout one, this is four station. So meaning you can very fast if we have a long line. And if a library coming in, so you have a depth, people can wait in the, this line coming in. So, so, and we can move if they have more people, we can move the line even further, so they can get more car. But currently, haven't seen the demand yet. So in that way, should we jump into another site?
I, I agree with you in terms of we don't have the demand. And if anything, maybe put it on the south side of the city. But at this point, I'm.
Maybe north side, maybe north side, north side, do we have a space for the north side park? Okay, because north side possible. I don't know their demand on the north side. But again, West Covina, we, our City Hall is pretty central located. Everybody can drive over here with this four station. So anyway.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Thank you, Mayor. In regards to Cortez Park, I remember a few months ago, Cortez Park was busy. And back then, they did take walk-in. And two weeks ago, my family went there. I get tested every week at my job, but they went there and on a Friday, and they were told they don't, they no longer take walk-in, and it has to be by appointment only. And they did see a line. The school district, because my son's an athlete, they have to get tested, they get their test results five to seven days. And that was a big thing, which I believe the school district is changing. And I know that's part of the reason why the school district is happy that we're open, because I believe our, this test results is given two days, 48 hours. And I hope that doesn't change. So I want to make sure that that is being taken into consideration as we get more people getting their tests, that it doesn't delay and no more than 48 hours. But that, that was a concern of mine. But I wanted to know if Cortez is no longer officially not taking walk-ins. I mean, they used to, and then they stopped.
I'm gonna ask our assistant city manager to speak to it. I know she's been pretty close to that question.
City manager, quickly, can we at least know what they're going to provide for us at the Cameron Park? We know what we getting to. If they can still give us appointment only, and we have a, okay, drive-by, okay, over here, drive-through over here, then people will come over here. Because people, the appointments sometimes very difficult. It take a couple of days, this and that, and they want to do it right away. So can we ask county what kind of service they want to provide? So can we ask county what kind of service they want to provide for us?
So I can ask or answer Roxanne's coming up, but the Cortez Park at the senior center, the kiosk, they do prefer appointments, but they are taking walk-ins?
Well, they didn't take walk-in. I know my husband and my kids called me and said...
We're gonna invite our assistant city manager, Roxanne Laramette.
Which took almost a week to get their results.
Kudos to Roxanne. She's been doing all of the work to be out in front on this issue, and has been doing a really great job of it.
Thank you, city manager, Carmine. Through the chair, if I may, just to answer Councilwoman Lopez Viado's question, you're right. You know, that site did transition from, at one point, they were offering the walk-up services, and that really was because there was more availability. Because of the spike and individuals really demanding and needing those tests, they have switched to really encouraging residents and community members and whoever wants to use their services to make those appointments. I believe there was another question on the table about having Cortez, go ahead, councilman, if you wouldn't mind repeating it.
Mayor, do you mind?
Go ahead.
Okay, I think another issue or service, I think the federal government now allow every household, you can order the four, okay, 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 in-house testing, you can receive four. So meaning, you could saturate a lot of testing thing, okay, and they will continue to flow into, okay, people's hand. So what I'm saying, okay, I just, I'm not against they come over here, just want to know what we getting to it, okay? And can, can they do a service that would be, little bit more efficient, okay? And then they can provide, okay, no appointment, okay, and something that people can, I think a lot of, okay, office, that maybe they, they want you to have a test, okay? And then, okay, so you're free of virus, so you can da-da-da, this and that, to come in. So, so then, if you have wait for three or four days, and you have make appointment, okay, and then, okay, quickly, the person I referred to Wednesday at Shadow Oak, he, he made appointments for a week later to get a test, that he live in Royal High. So, so what I'm saying is, it's very inconvenient, I'm talking before we have a Shadow Oak. So when we have Shadow Oak, I say, just walk, try through, and that's what he did, and Wednesday, and he got the test result, okay, and on Friday. So, so what I'm saying is, that is much more efficient, okay? I think that's what the people, they prefer. But still, we have a four station, I don't see the demand yet. Okay, I'm done with my question.
Can I kindly add to it for Cortez Park, or along with these stations here? What's the maximum number of tests that are being, being given out on a daily basis?
For the county, taking a look at the Cortez site, we, I actually have a phone call meeting with them this coming Thursday, so that will be on the list of questions to ask them. As far as the Shadow Oak site and the city hall site, when asked that question, what we're being told is that we're, they're not reaching capacity, that they have the ability to administer hundreds of tests a day, so we're not at that point. But what I can do is, what we can do is provide you with status updates of what those stats looked like, and that way you can, and also with estimated wait times. So hopefully, that will help to get closer to the answer to that question. And then again, well, I will ask the county that same question in my phone conversation with them on Thursday.
I just wanted to know what, how many people Cortez Park is currently serving?
Absolutely. We'll get those numbers to you, absolutely.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So, one, one question I had, because I did have a couple of residents who told me that, because they, they didn't drive, that they had gotten turned away. So do, can, can we clarify walk-ups not in cars? Because we do have some, some residents who don't have the capacity to, to drive through.
We can clarify that, yes.
Okay. And then, also, I, I think I agree with the ability to walk in without an appointment. I think a lot of, a lot of, a lot of jobs, a lot of companies are, you know, you get exposed, you, you need that test, and we kind of need to be able to, to go, right? And not, not wait three days, right? I mean, you know, people are missing work, and a lot of, a lot of the employers are not covering the wage loss. And, and so I, I think this is, this is why the, my, my push to, to have the Cameron spot, if we can, just to give, again, as much access, so, so people don't, don't miss, miss work, right? Miss, miss that livelihood, and we can, I guess, try to function as normal as possible, given what the rules are. So, like Councilman Wu said, if we could, you know, make these sites as walk-in as possible without appointments, I, I think that, that is definitely something that we need.
Can I make a motion, table this to get all the information?
Okay, go ahead, you do it. I quit, okay, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, it sounds like we have some unanswered questions.
Yeah, I think we need more information, hopefully.
If we, if we table this, that means Cortez has to cease?
If I could clarify, this is a receive and file item. I'm trying to keep you and the public informed, and it's a pretty fluid situation. I think no lines is a good problem to have.
We don't have to approve this. And what we argue over here for?
I, I saw the time, oh my god. Appreciate the conversation.
You should say it from the beginning, you say, this is just...
That's my fault.
But, but still, okay, I insist, we need to know how we getting to it. We don't want to oversaturate, okay, and there will no demand, and you take out a lot of space, and people want to go to the normal time, they want to exercise in the park, they want to drive over there, they want to party, they want to have their family outdoor, and we, we take their parking space. So that is the concern, okay? And this maybe will be over within two weeks, so, okay, it's like last year, okay? I'm pretty confident, okay, due to see the thing. So, so again, I just don't want to, we already have, we use our city hall, okay, and give them all the parking, and give this big one, okay? And then now, okay, okay, we can order through mailing, they will send to your home, okay? And you can do yourself and mail back, and get know what the result is. So we have a, a lot of, not like last year, this year, I think we have a lot of resource. So we want to make sure, okay, hopefully, we have information, okay, know they can provide a good service, then, okay, okay, and how long the duration, the contract, okay? If they want to entire year, then maybe we cannot, we don't want to do it.
My, if I may, through the chair, my understanding of the ASG company that, that's running the, the drive-through sites, they're flexible, you know, they're, they're not looking for a long-term...
Then how about county?
The county, we will revisit that conversation with them.
How many months they want?
In the initial email that I received, they're asking through June.
To June?
Through June.
So we, if we sign the contract, then we have to give them the space for June?
That was the initial, that was the initial email regarding offering or opening up a fourth site. So I do have a phone call scheduled with them for Thursday.
If we don't have a demand, can we, we move, then say, please, just leave us, okay? We want to give back to our public, can we do that? If we sign the contract?
Mr. Mayor, there's, there's language in there that we can get out of these agreements with or without cause.
Yes.
So if there is no demand without cause, we can get out.
I just don't want to stick with them to June.
Again, those are initial emails. Those are just what the county is requesting. They're putting a request, not a demand, or, or a hook, if you will, the county, the city isn't on the hook. They're putting in a request, and it's our, and this is our opportunity to address that, and also to raise any of the concerns that we have as far as operations are concerned, and accessibility, and balancing both the demand for testing as well as usage of the park.
Okay.
Okay, so item number pulled by Mayor Protem Diaz, we had some discussion, and, well, I guess since it's receive and file, do we need roll call?
If I have hearing, no opposition, I'm okay.
Well, everyone's good to receive.
I have, I'm opposite. No, I really have a problem. I want, I want the information before we really get into it. I don't want to, okay, have a day, okay, no, no, no demand, and then we'll stay till, and like we last year, they over there have nothing to do. I feel sad, because the people idling over there, and just no car coming, want to do the test. So, so I just want to make sure we don't have the same situation happen like last year.
If there's no demand, we could pull it? Okay, so that moves us to, so consensus on receive and file. That takes us to number five, also pulled by Mayor Protem Diaz.
Okay, can you please tell me if this is a receive and file before we start talking?
No. Through the chair.
I don't want to waste anyone's time.
This is consideration of an award of a public bid. That does require council action. If there are questions, we'd be happy to field them. In fact, we have our traffic engineer present this evening to, in the ready, set position to answer any questions you may have.
I, I don't have any questions, I just want to say thank you, and I think this is an excellent thing to do for our city, because I've noticed that a lot of our intersections, you can't even see, they're dangerous. And along with these intersections being painted, we're going to get our LED stop signs flashing, LED stop signs. I think it's going to be wonderful, and I think that our city's going to be much safer. And thank you very much for doing this work for us. I think our residents deserve it, and I know that I have some residents that are going to be very pleased about this. So thank you again. That's all.
Thank you. Any other discussion, any other questions? Councilman Tabatabai?
I think the, the only concern was the, that there was only one, one bid, so maybe you can speak, speak to that.
I'm gonna invite Jana Robbins, our traffic engineer, to come to the podium and answer that question. It does meet the requirements of state law. You're not required to award a bid, you could, options are really myriad on this, you could reject all bids, you could go back out to bid. We'd like to get this done, so we're recommending approval, but Jana, if you could speak to that question.
The RFP went out to all the usuals, but this was the only bid that we did receive. The, one, the superior pavement marking is, this is what they do, we have worked with them in various other cities that we are in. So they do good work, so it wasn't like we were doubting that this company could do it. So now, I don't know why there was only one bid. I think maybe it's the times that it is. But it went out to all the, our usual people that we send it out to.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Nope? Okay, so...
Can I move it to be approved?
Yeah, do we need roll call? Yes. So we have a motion by Mayor Protem Diaz?
Second.
And the second by Councilman Wu. Roll call, please.
A motion by Mayor Protem Diaz, a second by Councilman Wu for item number five. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Costelanos?
Aye. Item number five passes 5-0. Brings us to number seven. Regarding painting our fire stations two and four, pulled by Councilwoman Lopez Viado, you have the floor.
Uh, yes, I just had a quick question. I know it's a consideration for painting, as I was seeing regarding station two and four, they also said remove the carpet on the hallway walls. I, I do remember that wall, it does need to be removed, and the wallpaper, and I believe paint has been painted over that wallpaper? It, that's true, correct?
Good evening, Mayor, council, citizens, staff. Yes, I believe that sometime it had been painted over before.
Okay. And I just wanted to just verify and double-check that with these bids, that is, they're going to be doing that work as well, to remove that and retexture, and prepare and retexture those walls, remove all those items that is needed, not just paint. Okay?
Request for bid had, remove all wallpaper, all the wall coverings off and starts from scratch.
Okay.
Decrease the contamination that is held in those type of products in the walls.
So if, by chance, that they see anything behind the walls, or any of best, or any of that sort, is that what is going to occur on your end to increase any of the fees, or...
I apologize, I missed, I missed, I missed a question.
Um, and when they are doing the work, because they're just not painting, obviously, with the interior walls, they're removing certain things, but if they find anything behind those walls, possibly, there is a possibility they might find other, other issues behind those walls, correct?
Is your question like asbestos or something like that?
Yeah.
We've already had them all tested. We had everything tested, all fire station tested, and anything that had any contaminants have already identified, and already have plans for those removals when they get to it. Station two and four, and those locations where we're doing the work, doesn't have any asbestos identified from the experts. This is just removing the wallpaper, texturing over to get it back to a regular wall, and then painting it properly.
Okay, got it. And then I just wanted to make sure, I know that no new general fund is being utilized, but they were allocated the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 budget, those funds are available. I just wanted to make sure, and this must be our finance, did, I just want to make sure that those funds are available, that we did not use those funds for something else within our fire. Is that correct?
No, ma'am, we came to this body, and I brought all the projects we were doing, how much, we had a set amount of money you guys gave and allocated for all these projects, and we're still well within that at this time.
Okay, so that, okay, um, that's all I had.
Any, Councilman Wu?
I think I remember the wallpaper you mentioned about, okay, we went to the open house, and when you walk us around, okay, I think five of us, okay, you told us, okay, and we saw it, that, that is kind of hazardous, okay, because like, oh, and that possible you can have a germ, this and that, hiding, okay, all this wallpaper with kind of fully looking, okay, needs to be, okay, removed, and to be safe, okay, and painted over them. So I have no problem for that, okay? But the only problem I have is, we paint, okay, station two, station four, okay, and how about our, okay, city hall, okay, and how about our, our station, besides station number one? Station number one is condemned already, we, so we want to hopefully, okay, sell the city hall, we can get a, build a brand-new one this year. Talking about all the station, do we need a, okay, up, okay, upkeep for the, okay, and the maintenance for the paint job? And the city, city, it's possible we need some paint job too, okay? And I don't know, we can use the rescue fund for the, some capital improvement to at least make our city, otherwise, you, you have a licking roof, this and that, for a big city like West Covina, it's not presentable. So this is only a question about, okay, can we, okay, beside the station two and four, do we have any, okay, survey to look into, potentially, we can find some, at least keep our city, okay, okay, update? It's my question.
Through the chair, it's a very fair question. One of our goals was we want to get all city facilities to standard, and we've got a long way to go. I think everything we own needs a roof or painted, or an HVAC system, or look around, carpet, chairs in the council chambers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It's quite a long list. And so we're just trying to do worst first. As regarding painting, there's really two ways to approach it. You could do it on a schedule, you know, every five years, or every 10 years, or whatever, or the lie we tell each other is, we'll paint it as needed, which is a euphemism for saying, well, never paint it. That's the condition of these firehouses, they really deserve this item that we're recommending to you tonight. I'm happy to look at other facilities and keep hitting them, go down the list, because I'd really like to make all our facilities something we could be proud of, and we're not there yet.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Last question is, how long will the work take to complete, and would that displace our firefighters?
I'm not sure exactly the timeframe that it'll take to do it. It will not displace anybody at any time.
Okay.
We've already worked with the vendors when they had the walkthrough, we advised what was needed, when we did the scope of work, and it was advised what, they were needed to be there. So nobody on, for station two or station four, is going to be displaced for this.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I quickly, just, just add on the, the Shadow Oak Park community centers, I think they, they need paint job, okay, the inside and some of the, they want, look, we, last night, we have a tour, okay? That's beautiful view, but it just, okay, if it's just a fresh paint, okay, and at least some repair, I think that would be gorgeous. I think a lot of people will rent the place for wedding, this and that. The view is very pretty, so, anyway, this is my suggestion, okay?
All right, and with that, do I have a motion on item number seven?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
We go, one and two. Assistant city clerk, do we have roll call, please?
I have a motion by Councilwoman Lopez Viado, and a second by Councilmember Tabatabai for item number seven. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Costellanos?
Aye. Number seven passes 5-0, and that's perfect timing for our 8:30 PM public hearing, item number nine.
Thank you, Mayor.
This matter is set for public hearing to receive, is set for public hearing to receive input from the community regarding election district boundaries. Will the Assistant City Clerk verify the proper legal notice has been given?
Proper legal notice was given, Mayor.
Okay. And are we going to have a presentation first, or are we going to open the public hearing?
We've opened the public hearing. We're going to have a presentation by Mr. Jeff Siminetti. He's here.
Okay, cool. So, presentation first, right?
Yes, please. And then, we can have council discussion and public discussion.
Perfect.
All right. Good evening. Is my microphone on? Can anybody hear me?
We could hear you.
Microphone is on.
Yeah, we could hear.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Jeff Siminetti, and I'm with the National Demographics Corporation. We appreciate the opportunity this evening to speak with you regarding the redistricting process for 2021. And let me begin the presentation. All right. So, this evening, we will be talking about the agenda for the 2021 redistricting process. We'll talk about some of the key project timelines, deadlines, and the next steps in hearings that we'll go through. And we'll also talk about the 2020 U.S. Census data with the updated demographics for the city, and this is one of the main reasons, again, why we are going through the redistricting So, why do cities go through the redistricting process? So, the Census Bureau updates the data for the U.S. Census across the country every 10 years, and to abide by both the applicable federal and California voting rights laws, we have to go through the redistricting process to make sure that the new census data is applicable and follows both the California and federal voting rights laws. Important thing to remember is that West Covina elections are staggered, and council members hold four-year terms, and the districts that will be drawn that are associated with the redistricting process will apply to both the November 22 elections as well as the November 2024 and beyond elections. So, districts two, four, and five terms will end in November of 2022, and districts one and three terms will end in November of 2024. Important thing to remember here is that there is a very specific process for how the redistricting process needs to take place. We need to have at least four total public hearings to bring a map forward for consideration. We have two initial, what we call, pre-draft map hearings, and those are held prior to the release of the draft maps. You may be wondering, well, when are we going to see maps? The Fair Maps Act, which is Assembly Bill 849 in California, makes specific mention that there has to be at least two public hearings held prior to the release of the draft maps. So, that is tonight, as well as we had our first public hearing, which was a workshop on November 18th. These are primarily for education and to solicit input from the general public and the council as well on communities in the district. We had, again, two different census data releases, and you may see a difference between the U.S. Census Bureau population and the population that we use for the purposes of redistricting. So, the U.S. Census Bureau releases data in mid-August, and that's the official 2020 census data population. For the purposes of districting and redistricting, we use what's called the California statewide adjusted database. And what it does is what we call zeroes out the prison population. So, for the federal Census Bureau, the prisoners across the country are counted within the prisons, and again, happens the same way in the state of California. For the purposes of looking at population for districting and redistricting, the state of California takes the prison population and matches that to their last known address. So, the census data that we use for the statewide database for the purposes of district and redistricting might be slightly different than the U.S. Census Bureau data that you see, and the difference, again, is that is the prison population that are slightly different. We'll have two draft map hearings, which will discuss and revise the draft maps and to discuss the election sequence. And when we talk about the election sequence, again, it means which districts will be up in 2022 and which districts will be up in 2024. This process has to take place by no later and be completed by no later than April 17 of 2022 to be able to submit that map in time to the L.A. County Registrar of Voters for consideration for the November of '22 election. Again, we have to hold two public hearings prior to the reconsideration of draft maps, and this evening's hearing, as well as the November 18 hearing, satisfy those requirements. There are a couple of important redistricting rules and goals that we follow through the process, and we put them into three main components. So, the first are the federal laws, which are on the left-hand side, which specifically pertain to the Federal Voting Rights Act, and there are two main components to that. First, the districts have to have generally equal population, and when we say generally equal population, the districts do not have to have exactly the same amount of population. They have to have no greater than a 10% deviation between the largest district and the smallest district. So, that means the percentage difference between the population of the largest district and the smallest district can be no greater than 10%. In addition, there can be no racial gerrymandering. In the middle, you'll see in the light blue box is what we call the California criteria for cities, and this is something that is very pertinent to the redistricting process in West Covina, and is one of the reasons why we have to go through the redistricting process. These four criteria that you see in the middle are rank ordered, number one, and specifically come from California Assembly Bill 849, which is the Fair Maps Act, which was passed in 2019. So, it was passed after you have your districts in place. And there are four rank ordered criteria. First, the districts have to be geographically contiguous. They have to, where practicable, have undivided neighborhoods and communities of interest. They have to have easily identifiable boundaries, and they have to be compact. And when we say compact, what that means is you do not bypass one group of people to get to a more distant group of people. Finally, we can have some other traditional redistricting...
Right in the audience, please. Sorry. Please continue.
We have some other traditional redistricting principles, so we look to respect voters' choices in continuing office. We also want to look to minimize the numbers of voters who are shifted between different election years. And remember, we'll get to a slide here, the geographic continuity is something pertinent to the city of West Covina and something that we'll cover in a moment. Here is the demographic summary of the existing districts. So, you'll see here, we have our total population of 109,856, and the deviation for the districts are within that 10% threshold, okay? So, you can see here, the percentage deviation from the largest district to the smallest district is 2.77%. So, your districts are population balanced. There is a reason why we have to go through the redistricting process, which we'll get to in a moment. Another pertinent thing to remember, too, is when we're looking at items related to protected class voting, we look at the citizen voting age population, which is in the bottom box there. So, as you can see, we have currently with the districts that are drawn, we have three majority Hispanic citizen voting age population districts, meaning districts one, excuse me, yeah, districts one, two, and three are all majority Latino citizen voting age population So, if your districts are population balanced, why do we have to go through the redistricting You are population balanced, but as a result of the changes to the census block makeup and the changes that have occurred as a result of the Fair Maps Act, there is a district within the city that is no longer contiguous by the definition of the Fair Maps Act. And as a result of this, the city of West Covina will have to go through the redistricting process. So, what do I mean by this? There is a very specific contiguity requirement, and contiguity means that districts are together. There are no islands. There's a contiguity requirement that is stated within Assembly Bill 849, and let me read this specifically. This is Elections Code 21601-C. "The board shall adopt district boundaries or council using the following criteria set forth in the following order of priority." Now, remember, we said that contiguity is the first priority from Assembly Bill 849? "To the extent practicable, council districts shall be geographically contiguous," and this is the important part, "areas that meet only at the points of adjoining corners are not contiguous." So, as a result, in the shifts in the census blocks, and we'll show you an image here in the next slide, District Four within the city is no longer considered contiguous by this definition. So, what specifically do I mean by this? Here is an area of District Four, and again, between Districts Three and Five. So, what are we looking at here? So, that tan line is where your current districts are. In between the 2010 census and the 2020 census, the U.S. Census Bureau changes around some census blocks. There's no rhyme or reason as to why they do this, but there's many, many cities where they change their census blocks. And as you can see now, there are a couple of census blocks within this area that have changed. So, now, as you can see, there's parts of District Three that are now in District Four and vice versa. If you look at the circle to the far right, now you can see where District Four now, as a result of the changes in the census blocks, comes to a point. And as a result of this change in the census blocks and the fact that the Fair Maps Act specifically states that you cannot have contiguity coming in at just a point, this map is no longer considered contiguous, and as a result, we need to go through the redistricting process to change the lines, to change and fix the contiguity issues that are here. So, with that being said, let's take a look at some of the other demographic analysis, because we'll be talking as well about communities of interest, which is another one of the AB 849 requirements. For the next couple of maps here, I will show you what we call our citizen voting age population. And again, citizen voting age population doesn't mean that you are a registered voter. It simply means that you are any citizen within the city that is 18 years of age or older. And this here shows your Latino citizen voting age population. For each one of the maps that I'm going to show you, the color scheme is the same, so blues and purples are lower percentage, red and orange colors are a higher percentage. So, you can see, particularly in districts one, two, and three, there's a pretty high percentage of Latino citizen voting age population. Here's the Asian-American citizen voting age population, and in parts of District Four and Five, there are some significant concentrations, again, of Asian-American citizen voting age population. Here is your African-American citizen voting age population. And in addition to the demographic data, we get some significant amounts of data related to items such as income, percentage of residents who rent within the city. Here's percentage renters. And here are your income statistics. So, this is showing the percentage of a census block that is, has an income of $75,000 or So, for the remainder of this evening's hearing, we'd like to get some feedback from the council and the general public pertaining to, are there particular areas that you would like to define as either a neighborhood or community of interest as part of the requirements in Assembly Bill 849? So, when we talk about neighborhoods, it means exactly what you would think it is. So, a neighborhood could have natural dividing lines, so mountains, rivers, streams. It have unnatural dividing lines like roads or highways, canals, those type of things. It can also be an area around a particular landmark, a school, a park, a downtown. When we talk about communities of interest, we take that idea of a geographic area and add a shared issue or characteristic. So, it could be a shared social or economic interest. It could be an area that is similarly impacted by city or county policies, and we're asking you to tell us your community story. And what we're asking is, would this community benefit from being included within a single district for the purposes of its effective and fair representation, or would it benefit more from having multiple representatives? So, some possible neighborhoods and communities could be the following. Again, this is not an exhaustive list, and we'd like to hear your feedback. There may be some things that you want to add. There may be some things that you want to take away. Please give us your feedback on this. So, we have the freeway corridor and commercial areas. We have the Azusa Avenue corridor. And also HAAs or other neighborhoods that you may identify that should be kept together for purposes of, a single district for its purposes of effective and fair representation. So, at tonight's hearing, we'll be asking for the council discussion and action and providing feedback to us on areas that may meet the AB 849 in the definition of a neighborhood and communities of interest that should be included within a single district for its purposes of effective and fair representation. So, we've had our first two hearings, and this is our final slide here before we go back to the council. We've had our first two public hearings on this evening and January 13th, as well as November 18th. We will have, we're still determining the final dates for the third public hearing, and then, the districts need to be adopted by ordinance, which requires a first and second reading. So, there'll be a first and second reading of the ordinance, and then, this process has to take place and be completed by no later than April 17th to be able to submit the map to the L.A. County Registrar of Voters in time for the November of '22 election. So, that concludes the presentation. We appreciate your time this evening, and we'd be happy to answer any questions or comments that you may have.
Thank you for that presentation. Does anybody have any questions? Councilman Wu?
Okay, I feel like deja vu again, because, okay, I was, okay, in the 2017, okay, to become districting. At that time, I was the person against the districting. I feel like if I represent the city, I want to represent entire city, because that's how I got elected in 2015, November. But it looked like this districting become like all the city have to do it, okay, due to the so-called fair voting right, okay, and they want to make sure each of a group, they all have a representation, because it looked like, sound like, okay, West Covina been a long time, potentially, the representation is not there due to we was in the, okay, odd numbers, like 15, 17, 19, so they changing to 18 to matching, okay, because we got sued. We got sued by, okay, the attorney about we are basically more like suppressed voters, okay, and choosing the odd numbers. So, we now, okay, in 2017, 18, we approve, okay, with, okay, 3-2, majority to, okay, moving to, okay, and 18, okay, so to become an even number, so and go with the major election. So, in that way, we will have more voter coming out to voice themselves about what they agree or disagree. So, in that way, hopefully, everybody can participate. But my question would be, okay, we just done it, 2018, okay, and we went through long period of, I don't know, 20, 30 map, and they have so different kind of map, and then finally, they feel like to be fair, so have to go to vertical, okay? So, everybody get freeway, okay, north and south. So, in that way, okay, and they all, everybody have some shopping center, okay, and everybody have a different demographic. But my question would be, we have to do this? We just done this like a couple of years ago? I understand, okay, city manager always say we have to do it. Lisa told me we have to do it. Okay, I'm just whining again, say, we just done this, I spent a lot of money and time. So, because I think the census, because the census, so we have to, no matter what, it just finished 2019 or 20, you still have to do it?
Yes, councilmember. So, the difference since you have gone through your districting process is that the Fair Maps Act has passed in between now and then. And the key component here, as I mentioned, is that they have the rank ordered criteria. The top rank ordered criteria is contiguous districts. And with the definition of the way that the Fair Maps Act, and again, let me read this because it specifically pertains to this, slide 10 here. "To the extent practicable, council districts shall be geographically contiguous. Areas that meet only at the points of adjoining corners are not contiguous." This is a law that has passed since you've gone through the districting process, number one. And number two, as you can see, your, the census block makeup of your districts has changed, and as a result of that, the maps now have a, particularly District Four, has an area that now comes together at a point. And as a result of that change, because this does not comply with the Fair Maps Act, that is the main driver as to why the city has to go back through the redistricting process.
So, got it. Okay, so, it look like... So it look like they have like islands. So basically possible District Three, that corner, can be going to District Four. Then in that way, it would be comply with the state law?
I mean, there's multiple different ways that the map can be drawn. But as it is, it comes together at a point and is not compliant with the Fair Maps Act.
Got it, okay. So that has to be addressed to make sure continuity.
Yes.
Not, even we in the same city, but it look like kind of angle a little bit missing with the population right there. Okay, I got it. Okay, so in that way, we need to, no matter what, and due to, so next time we do it, it will be 2030, right? So we do it every 10 years?
Every 10 years, yes.
So every time we census, no matter, so we have to do it again?
Yes, every time for the census.
I hope I'm still alive at that time. Okay, I'm done this, okay? Hopefully, okay, get everything over with. Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing to receive input from the community regarding election district boundaries. This is the second public hearing on the matter. Mr. Cármeni, who, well, we already have the staff report. So do we have any speaker cards?
I received no speaker cards, mayor. It looks like we have a speaker.
Probably wouldn't violate the, I think, I could be corrected. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the city of West Covina came to an agreement four or five years ago to conduct two elections under the five district strategy. And then I favor that we revert back, just eliminate all the internal boundaries and go back to elections at large and the three top vote getters or the two top vote getters, depending on which cycle you're in, receive the council seats. It's just, and I think you could do that under the agreement, the, was it a court?
It's a settlement.
Out of court agreement. So I favor just eliminating the internal boundaries completely. However, you might not agree with my proposal and the alternative. I think the current plan violates the compactness aspect. And to my mind, one community of interest would be a big corridor north of the freeway. And the south side, pick up 22,000 from the south side of the community. And that leaves three more, 22,000 from the south. And then the other three districts can be created from the east, east part of the district and the west part, the west part and the central, 22,000 each. So I think that would better satisfy the five communities of interest and satisfy the Fair Maps Act as well. I don't believe all of the San Gabriel Valley cities are divided into five parts. And I think the at-large system is a better system. And I think it might be cheaper if you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
I have another speaker, Ms. Jerry Potters.
Good evening. My question may be for you, and he may end up answering it. To get back into compliance, are you, councilmembers, you know this information already. This is not a surprise. Talking about tweaking, like just adjusting and keeping the basic shapes, the basic configuration that you currently have, you know, to get rid of the parts that aren't, you could just, that's what I'm kind of wondering, can it just be adjusted? Now, if it's not, and you're talking about brand new, start over, I lean the way, Bill, I think, if I understood him correctly, north of the freeway is ignored. I was a strong advocate of the vertical lines, thinking that way you said it. But we're ignored. We have lots of potholes. We have the freeway area. Every activity you talk about is at Shadow Oak, Cortez, City Hall, Cameron. I actually am leaning towards, maybe we should be annexed onto Covina because we have nothing. So maybe if you're talking about entirely redoing the lounge, we have Brian, he is our council member that we go to. We have nothing. Redraw the lines and put us up north of the freeway and give us a council member. Thank you.
Do I have any others who would like to speak regarding the district boundaries?
No, mayor.
All right, we've got none. So I shall now close the public testimony portion of the public hearing and ask council for any further questions or discussion. Is there anything anyone would like to add? All right. I think this, as given by the presentation, if this satisfies the newest law, I have no objection to this. I have no problem with this. So with that, I mean, since there's no further discussion, do I have a motion to approve? Or does it receive and file?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I have a motion by Mayor Costellanos with a second by Councilman Wu. Councilmember Tabatabai.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Councilman Wu. Excuse me.
I have been ignored.
My apologies. Thank you. Mayor Protem Diaz.
Aye.
Mayor Costellanos.
Aye.
Item number nine passes 5-0. That moves us to departmental matters. Item numbers 10 and 11 are considerations of MOUs between the city of West Covina and the POA and consideration of the MOU between city of West Covina and the PMA. Mr. City Manager, who will present this report?
Helen Tran is here to present this report this evening.
Hi, Helen, thank you. It's on.
Good evening, mayor, city council, staff members, and members of the public. Helen Tran, HR Director. I'd like to open the presentation PowerPoint.
You want to sit over there? I'll sit in front of the monitor.
Sure, no problem.
One moment.
Stretch. No problem.
Before we start the presentation, I'd like to give a little recap on our employee relations with our employee groups. Just a few months ago, we have reached an agreement with five employee groups. And that was a three-year term agreement with a comprehensive MOU. So that was a really great accomplishment for us. It's important, city management recognizes the importance of employee relation and labor relation. And I'm happy to share that we have come to an agreement with police safety and police management. So let's pull up police safety.
So who left?
We have left then after these two got approved tonight, fire safety and fire management.
Fire, okay, got it, thank you.
Okay. So the first slide will show, you'll see the, pretty much the bullet points of the terms and agreements. So the term is three years through June 30th, 2024. The salary increases are COLA, 3% effective upon city council's approval tonight, no retro, and 3% effective July 1st, 2022, and then 3% effective July 1st, 2023. Then there's the CalPERS cost sharing. They are going to continue the 3% cost sharing on top of the 9% as required. And so that's 12% total for the CalPERS cost sharing. As well as the one-time essential worker pay, that's non-perceivable, one-time, 5,000. So that is for police safety.
That's a hero pay, right?
Yes.
Hero, okay.
Essential workers, yes.
Yes.
Next slide is the police management MOU. This is, this agreement is three years through June, actually, that should say December 31st, 2024. The salary increases effective upon city council approval is 8%, no retro. 3% effective January 1st, 2023, and not 2022, and then 3% effective January 1st, 2024. The CalPERS cost sharing, this is where it is, should be, you know, we should really pride ourselves for this with police management's willingness to, on top of 3% cost sharing, on top of the 9%, they are willing to also pay the additional 3%, so that's a total 15%. So that is huge on the cost sharing piece. So thank you, police management, for your willingness. And the also one-time essential worker pay, non-perceivable, one-time, 5,000. And that is the agreement for police management and police safety. So thank you so much for the safety members of police department.
Thank you, Helen. Any questions for Helen or for our staff by the council?
I don't have a question, but just later I might be a comment.
Okay, right now?
I can wait for other council.
I think nobody else has anything, so go ahead, council.
Thank you, mayor, okay? And I just want to say, and, you know, again, I sit over here since 2016, okay? I got elected 2015 and sit over here six years. I'm moving to the seventh year till November. And I'm just happy to say this, that I'm so proud that last year and this year, we owe our group, okay, and willingness, okay, and to work with city, with fairness, that we have to take care of our staff. At the same time, staff willing to take some of the, okay, and contribute some of the costs, like their CalPERS, okay, and that's eating city alive. So I really, I want to thank all the POA and the PMA and their willingness. And I see the 12% and 15% contribution. And then I never see previous six years when I was, okay, and the city council sitting on the dial. And this is a totally different feeling compared with four years ago. And that time, and the labor relationship is pretty toxic. Right now, I just see nothing but extremely, okay, and high morale, okay, and happiness, like proud to work in our city. And I said it many times, happy staff, happy city, and happy residents. We need a staff to serve willingness, but we need to treat our staff with fairness. You take care of the staff, the staff will take care of you. And it's my true belief, we cannot shortchange people. At the same time, they're willing to contribute, and that meaning what? They're willing to work with city and to make sure our financial situation is sound for the future, for the future. Because we won't be sitting here forever. We have to build a base for our future, for our future generation. And I think this is such a good feeling, okay? And since last year, and our number one group, the POA and PMA, are willing to put this together and come out of agreement. And, okay, I just, as a city council, okay, I just want to represent my resident to say thank you. And now, time to work, okay? And after we can approve this, okay, I hope, okay, we can get more patrol on the street and get some of the service, get some overlap, okay, shift back, okay, and let our resident to be proud of our police department. And I know our police department right now is very proud about their department. Good leadership from our chief, okay, and captain. I think this is an excellent department, okay? And, okay, we will continue to work together, and thank you so much. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Councilman Wu. Thank you, Helen, for the hard work. And thanks to our POA and PMA for their contributions and their hard work. And let's keep it up.
Thank you. And I'd like to acknowledge our city team, Stephanie, our city manager, and Robin. And it was really a team effort with the union, so thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you, Helen. I want to move the motion to, or somebody want to say something or?
No, okay, so I have a motion from Councilman.
I want to move the motion to approve for the PMA and PMA with our union, with the offer. You want to read the resolution?
Through the chair, mayor, if we can take this, each resolution as separate votes. So our first resolution would be number 2022-11. So if I could have a motion for that resolution.
So move.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Mayor Costellanos. Councilmember Tabatabai.
Aye.
Councilman Wu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz.
Aye.
Mayor Costellanos.
Aye.
And then I would need a motion for Resolution 2022-12.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Mayor Costellanos. Councilmember Tabatabai.
Aye.
Councilman Wu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz.
Aye.
Mayor Costellanos.
Aye.
Both motions pass 5-0.
Congratulations, and thank you so much.
Great job. That brings us to the end of our meeting. Do we have any council member reports, requests, or comments? Nothing, okay, well, I'd just like to thank our city staff for everything they've been doing and navigating us through these hard times. So let's keep it up. And with that, our meeting is concluded. Have a good night.